I'll call the meeting to order for the Wilmer City Council. This is a special meeting for Monday, March 12th. We'll call.
Mayor Marv Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Meskey.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly. Seven present, zero absent.
Nine present, zero absent.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As had stated at the beginning of the meeting, this is a special meeting. So with that, are there any deletions to the agenda? Otherwise, we'll proceed as the agenda is presented. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next to the consent items, Ms. Summers.
City Council minutes of February 20th, 2018. Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of February 23rd, 2018. Planning Commission minutes of February 21st, 2018. Application for exempt permit for West Central Ducks Unlimited. Resolution approving purchase of two pickup trucks for Public Works. Resolution approving purchase of one F-450 pickup truck for Public Works. Resolution approving amendment to Engineering Professional Services Agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink. Resolution authorizing execution of Wilmer Township Fire Agreement. Wilmer Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of January 16th, 2018. Wilmer CER Joint Powers Board minutes of February 23rd, 2018. And the accounts payable through February 28th, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Motion made in second to approve the resolution as presented. The last three items, the Wilmer Lakes Area CVB minutes, the CER Joint Powers Board, and the accounts payable were to accept. The others were to approve. Discussion. Sheen and hearing, none? We'll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
A resolution passes. Next is the City Council open forum. Ms. Summers, has anybody signed up?
Yes, we have one person that has signed up.
Mr. Bob Score. Again, please state your name and if you reside within the city or outside of the city.
Robert Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street. I'll give my address. Doesn't bother me. A while back, there was a big deal made about Mr. Christensen liking a Facebook page. Now, there's another guy in town that just got off a suspension of five weeks that some of you on the council followed because I've seen your likes on there. I don't do Facebook. I look at it. I don't have a Facebook page and the guy is always the victim, the one that just came back from his five weeks hiatus. His name is Jason Doherty, AKA The Wilmer Town Crier. The reason I'm bringing this up for is he always says, "I'm a racist. Ron's a racist. Bobby Ennis is a racist. Everybody's a racist." But I want to tell you something. I've got some police reports that are really saddening. He called the cops on two Somali kids that rang his doorbell one time. Now, big offense, why call the police? He called the police on two Somali kids playing soccer, kickball, in the parking lot down there at his place because it hit the window. Now, why not go out and say something to them? He called the police on, because the Somalis left garbage on the tables on Becker Avenue there, and the police came over and told them to remove the tables. Maybe that would help the problem. He also called the police, it was, I think, a Somali holiday, like our Fourth of July, whatever, so they were whooping it up on Becker Avenue, and they left some garbage there. So he called them again. What I'm getting at is who's really racist here and who's Islamophobic? The city went over with a street cleaner and swept, cleaned the streets because if he's such a friend of the Somalis, like he always says he is, why didn't he go out and clean it up himself? I just don't understand this. And then, allegedly, he packed up some of that garbage and threw it in a temporary mosque down at the old Habbix Building. And all he had to do, he never got anything out of it, but he had to apologize to the elders. You're on a commission, that really smokes me. But anyway, I've got 29 seconds left. People, what kills more people than an AR-15? People texting. 6,000 people in America killed last year, 500,000 injured. When you put your phones down, I'll put my AR-15 down. But I'm a proud gun owner, and I don't like this stuff that's going on. So anyway, ran out of time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have consideration of a cafe, restaurant, and soft drink license. Repealing that ordinance. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Previously, the city clerk brought forward a recommendation that the city's licensing regimen for soft drinks and cafes be repealed. Before you, in your packet is a very simple ordinance that repeals these sections of your city code that was the location of your soft drink licensing program. It really is simply as simple as one ordinance with a line repealing those sections, which is what you see. Also in your packet is the ordinance that are on your books today that are being repealed in case you have any questions about that. With that, the recommendation is... Yes, the recommendation is that this be set for a public hearing. Would have to be, I would think, on the first meeting in...
April 2nd. The first motion that we need to introduce would be a motion to approve discontinuing the issuance of soft drink licenses effective December 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to approve a motion discontinuing the issuance of the soft drink licenses. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As previously mentioned, I applaud any and all efforts to reduce unnecessary taxes and fees in towns. I think this is a good move. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion to discontinue issuance of soft drink licenses effective December 31st, 2018, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we'd entertain a motion to introduce an ordinance repealing the soft drink sales licensing regulations and set a public hearing for April 2nd of 2018.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry as well. Next is consideration, acceptance of a dog statue and bench donation from Friends of the Dog Park and Wilmer Noon Lions. Mr. Brizendine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you is a request from the Lions Club to accept a donation totaling $4,757.12 to cover the expenses related to placing a statue and a bench in the Dog Park at Lions Park. Here this evening are Don Winkler and John Mashar from the Lions Club to give you a little bit more information about what their thoughts are and what led them to this donation request.
Mr. Winkler.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Well, and I don't know if I should give my address or not, 401 19th Street Southeast. But we're here tonight to hopefully get approval to, for you to accept a statue and that bench out at the Dog Park, Lions Park. The bench would face so people can sit outside the Dog Park area and observe without going into the Dog Park. And the statue is a life-size Black Lab, which is a common service dog, and we have a, it would be a little plaque that says, "In honor of all service dogs." The Lions have a long history of donating to service dogs. In fact, we each year provide funds for the Lions Leader Dog Program for the blind that's out of Michigan and the Can Do Canines Program out of the Twin Cities. So it's a perfect fit for us to have a Lions Park, have the Dog Park, and the association with service dogs. So that's the reason for the statue and the bench, like we said, would be so people could sit and observe and watch the activities of the Dog Park.
Thank you. John, anything you'd like to add?
I'm just standing right here.
You're long for moral support. Council, what do you...
One other thing I guess I would like to mention, since I could drop here, we'd like to get things ordered so we hopefully can get things set up by May 19th. The Lions have a new activity this year. I believe it's called Run, Walk, and Wag 5K Event. It's the first 5K event where people can bring their dogs along with, and it's going to be out at the Dog Park, beginning or ending, or whatever, but then we've done the dedication.
There's going to be a route that goes down from the Dog Park around kind of by 19th, back up around the block again. It's the first time of just kind of seeing how we had the initiative with the statue and the bench and just kind of getting involved with, since the circus was no longer going to be part of what Lions were doing, looking at something to take the place of that fundraiser. So this is the inaugural year of that, and hopefully many more to come, too.
Excellent. Would entertain a motion to, actually, this has to be a resolution because we're accepting funds, correct?
Correct. I'd recommend it by resolution, and then it needs to pass by a two-thirds vote.
Correct. So would someone introduce that motion?
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the acceptance of the dog statue bench donation from Friends of the Dog Park and Wilmer Noon Lions. Councilmember Meskey.
The prototypes we received in the packet here, are they the actual, what is it going to look like?
The statue is, I think the bench is going to be, if it's not that, it's going to be very close. The person who would know was going to come last week, and he couldn't come this week to give you the details on...
Well, I just wish you could see it because it actually looks really nice. I think that's going to be a nice addition out there, so thank you.
It's going to be a stone one similar to that.
On behalf of the Mayor's Office, thank you for all that you do out at the Dog Park. I remember when we were putting the first committee together to talk about location for that Dog Park, and Councilmember Nelson and myself served on that committee. And when we came to the Lions and asked you about that, you guys were very receptive to the idea right from the get-go. And thank you for being a community partner that gives back and does something for the community rather than just complain. So it's nice to hear that. So, you know, of course, I do kind of like that Black Lab, too, because I do have a Black Lab. So that's kind of, was a bonus when I seen that. So thank you for your work. And KC Dog was also involved in that, is that correct? Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Calvin, yes, indeed, that's where the funds originated from, and then the Lions have taken over since then. And what they're hoping for, if they're successful with their Wag 5K, that future funds would be raised for more amenities in the park that the dogs would enjoy.
And again, you know, what a grassroots effort. I mean, that's what this community's all about. If we take a look at a number of things that have happened positively in this community is because someone stepped forward with an idea, took that idea and ran with it. But the thing I like about you bringing this to us is the fact that you're also bringing the dollars with it. You're not just standing there with a handout saying, "Give me." You're saying, "We want to give this back to the community." So thanks to both of you for all you do, but also thanks to the Lions for what they do. We'll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
A resolution does best. Thank you very much. We look forward to the statue and the bench. So thank you very much. Next is consider introduction of text amendment to zoning ordinance relating to shopping center district. Ms. Anderson.
Mayor, members of the council, about 10 months ago or so, Planning Commission started a conversation about expanding the opportunities that businesses have to locate themselves in a shopping center district in town. The two properties that are affected and zoned shopping center districts are the Candy Mall and the Skylark Mall. With the discussion, they worked alongside Rockstep, who owns Candy Mall, manages it currently. We chose to greatly expand permitted uses outright in that district, as well as expand the plan review options, and then add a conditional use permit section as well. A lot of the different options that have been included are educational and industrial in nature. It is staff recommendation that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing at the April 2nd City Council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance relating to shopping center district. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quick for clarification, does this pertain to the entire piece of property or just the building itself, like within the existing walls?
It would be any property zoned shopping center district. So a lot of the buildings that are separate from the Candy Mall itself, but still within that property, would be affected.
Okay, so there could be new existing, or new or existing?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you know of some communities that have had some success stories?
Absolutely. I don't have any specific ones to give you, but I know that nationwide, this expansion of shopping center districts and the use that can go within, whether it's within the main mall building or some of those separate smaller buildings on that property, that's a nationwide trend.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meskey.
We've offered some tax incentives for this property in the past. These changes, are they changing anything to do with any of that agreements we've had with that taxing incentives before?
No. No changes.
Will these be subject to the same benefits that were offered to the whole Rockstep project?
I believe so. That would be a question for Bruce.
I believe that we offer tax abatement is what we offered there, and my understanding in talking with Mr. Peterson is this would apply, so it's any development that happens within that footprint would apply to the tax abatement.
Okay. I'm just curious, is there going to be any that are going to actually happen to the existing mall structure? It seems like we're doing a lot of projects peripherally and less on the building itself. Just an observation.
I have been led to believe, Councilmember Meskey, that we will be hearing some very exciting news in the very near future. So I had a meeting this morning with a group of individuals, and I think that we're going to start hearing some very positive things about, things happening within the mall itself. So at this point, they're still working out details, but my understanding is that the community will be very pleased with hearing the information that'll be forthcoming. All those in favor of the motion to introduce the ordinance and set a public hearing for April 2nd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, City Administrator's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, as far as the mall, one of the things that I've heard is that there's going to be a new upgrade out at the movie theater, and they're going to do a complete remodel out there. I know a couple of college students that live in Morris, and they go to Alexandria. A lot of the college students to go watch the movies over there. But with this new upgrade and speaker system and everything like that, I think we can encourage them to come to Wilmer, especially since two of them are my dependents. It's my money.
You're paying their college bill?
They need to spend it here. And then they can mow my yard while they're here. But first of all, thank you to Janelle. This is not Judy. Look, this is Janelle tonight, so good job to Janelle. Also, Samantha, if you could stand in the back. This is Samantha Beckman. She is our new HR Director, and we're going to have a meet and greet tomorrow in City Hall upstairs in the break room at 10 o'clock if you want to stop by and have a coffee. We would appreciate it and introduce yourself. We're very happy to have her on board. She is a local resident, born and raised in this area, her and her husband both, graduate of the University of Minnesota. So we're glad to have her on board. She's been in HR for over eight years, and so we had a nice conversation today, follow-up from when I met her a couple of weeks ago. So we're very pleased to have her. I'm not going to embarrass her and make her say anything tonight, but we'll save that for later. So thank you for coming tonight. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Samantha, the staff was running interference when I came this morning, so they were doing a good job of keeping the mayor away from the new HR Director. So I got a chance to say hi, and that was about it. So I would encourage everybody, if you're able, tomorrow morning to stop by at 10 o'clock. Ike and I were at a meeting this afternoon in regards to a nice housing project that's being proposed in Wilmer. If you've driven down Lakeland Drive as of the middle of last week, you've probably seen a new sign talking about a housing project potentially coming. And so Ike and I were in an hour meeting this morning, and then last week we had a meeting with the developer that probably went maybe 15, 20 minutes, but they just kind of rolled out the project to us. And so it'll be a real nice project. It'll be a real nice addition if the project comes to fruition. And again, this project is being brought forward by Vision 2040, the Housing Subcommittee. Vision 2040 is working very closely to make this project happen. So again, the, one of the stumbling blocks that may come along is we may have to redo the housing study because the last one that was done was done two years ago. And for some of the application processes, they need something within two years or less. This has been just a tad over two years, so they're not sure if that'll work. So we have a lot of really exciting things happening in our community. As a lot of you have seen, Epitopics was purchased by a company, I believe in Germany, if I remember correctly. And so they're looking at having their buildings here in Wilmer. That will also bring head of household jobs. It'll bring good paying jobs, and those will stay right here in Wilmer. So it's nice to see that that was a homespun project that happened right here in Wilmer, Minnesota, and then now bought out by another company, and then looking at potentially future expansions and hopefully even keep that all within the city of Wilmer. The other thing is, is that Fernando and I, on Saturday night, went out to the Curling Center and attended the Curling Bonds Spiel for the novice bonds spiel. And Fernando was lucky, he was there with his entire family. They had a great group there. There was about six of them, and I was there by myself. So they took the lonely duck under their wing and kind of let me hang out with them. But one of the things that I received was a pin from the Duluth Superior Curling Club. And for those of you that know anything about curling centers or curling clubs, is at these bonds speels, they hand out these pins. And then what you are supposed to do is then, I am supposed to then return the favor and hand her a pin, but I didn't have one with me. So luckily, Tom Amberg was there, and he had a pin from the Wilmer Curling Club, so they gave her one to cover the mayor who didn't have one. But what she told me was very interesting. So she lives in Superior. They came with their curling club here to Wilmer. They spent three nights in our hotels. They shopped at our local stores. They ate at our restaurants. They spent, like I said, three nights in the hotel. And I said to her, I said, you know, I mean, you kind of have this spiel down. And she goes, "Yeah, I work for the city of Superior, so I know the important things." So she talked about heads on bed. She talked about spending money in our restaurants, and she talked about spending money in our stores. And really, when you take a look at this bonds spiel, 32 different teams, they filled out to capacity. They had people asking to come to join. And the surprising thing is, is the same weekend Alexandria was having a bonds spiel. So we've talked about, what does the capacity look like? Well, Alexandria filled up theirs, and Wilmer filled up theirs both. And so the need for curlers and curling space within our region is growing dramatically. So it was a very fun event to be at. I know that, I think that Councilmember Alvarado enjoyed himself, along with Cindy and his family. So it was a very fun evening. So, and again, if I didn't talk about how good our local sports teams are doing, my wife and I were very fortunate, along with my grandson, to go and watch the boys play up in St. Cloud on Saturday, and then my wife and I had went and watched the girls play on Friday night. So both successful. And again, Wednesday at noon, the girls play down in the metro, and I'll be attending that as well. And so get involved in your local team sports. Be a part of good things happening. We all can find things to complain about, but if you can't find good things that are happening in Wilmer, you're not looking very hard. So that concludes my comments. And I believe, well, Andrew, we're going to start with you.
How does that work?
My eye was twitching, and you were out of focus, so that's why I got you.
All right. Let's see, the last two weeks, I was fortunate enough to check out the West Central Steel Building, and super impressive effort that was, that was put out there by Marcus and by Double J Masonry. The quality of fabrication and the timeliness that they were able to get everything done was just unreal, the, everything that had to come together there. And the ripple effect economically from that is pretty astounding when you figure that they're using, you know, local labor, local materials. They're even using software packages from companies that are located, you know, they have hubs located out on the Midwest Tech Campus. So that's, that's pretty astounding and encouraging. And then also, just as a plug for, you know, local economic development, Magnum is up and running. And as a representative local manufacturer, I can tell you that something like that has a huge, huge economic impact because as soon as they were up and running, there was a direct impact on less than truckload shipping rates to the tune of 12% to 18%.
Wow.
And so right away when that happens, local manufacturers, producers can really feel the effects. So the sooner we get that land filled up with, with companies like that that can help facilitate and, you know, help mesh the other companies and provide services, really makes an impact here. So that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just congratulations to the girls gymnastic team that went this day, the boys wrestling team that took fourth. Good luck to the girls Wednesday, and the boys, I believe, have one more game to...
Thursday.
...get to the state, so.
Yep.
Go Cardinals.
Exactly. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I attended the Highway 23 Coalition Annual Meeting last Friday that was held in Cold Spring, and also down at the Legislature on Wednesday, I think, is correct?
Thursday.
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. So good energy going there, build the gaps. I will be attending the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Day on Wednesday. And then I just have one request for consideration. We received an email about the public meetings coming up, and I would really like to request that we hold two separate public meetings. I think the group that has met for the Robins Island Task Force has put together a nice proposal, and I think that there is also a lot of questions being asked about our city, our city hall. And I think they're two different subjects, and will draw two different audiences, and I would really request that we honor both of those separately by holding two separate public meetings versus trying to combine it in a two-hour session. So that's my request. I know it's in the comments, but if we need to have that conversation next week, I'd appreciate that.
Can we put that on the agenda for the work session for next week?
Okay.
Councilmember Christensen.
Warmer weather is coming, so enjoy it.
Councilmember Schwantes.
I'll pass. I would just echo all the good things everyone's already said.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are never too old to learn. And with that being said, my mother is at the Community Center. She's 84 as of March 10th, and she's learning ukulele lessons. So we're never too old to not learn.
So we're never too old to not learn. And I would also encourage you to save two dates. April 10th, we have a major event coming to town with new citizenships, new citizens being naturalized, and that's going to be a, a good thing. And there's going to be a speaker on April 11th, and I'm just going to plant that seed and say, save the date, and, and more will be coming in the future, so I'm just going to leave that, save that date. And I echo what the mayor says about curling, it was a very good time, they're very appreciative of the support we're providing, they're saying this is the number-one growing sport in the nation right now. I, I, I think the Olympic team, I mean, it was growing, but capturing that goal didn't hurt them, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osmus.
I would just like to toot the horn of something that isn't sports-related. I spent the weekend following the robotics team.
Up in Duluth.
They were up in Duluth this last weekend, and they, they took fourth out of over 50 teams, and it's fascinating, and these things are huge. I mean, they're, they're huge. And the team was, they made it to the finals, the, and the week before that, they were in Grand Forks, but they've done a great, great job. And these are our, you know, these are our future engineers and manufacturers, and I just want to thank the businesses that have supported them to allow them to compete and to do what they do.
So could you share with us the project that they had to do? And of course, I know they had to build alliances with other teams, and so the, it's very strategic in what they do, it's not just simply going out there and running a robot, but it's very strategic, and then there are set tasks they have to accomplish, so maybe you can share with us, because, you know, when you say robotics, I mean, a lot of us thinks you're putting nuts on bolts, but that's nothing about what they were doing, so.
No, I don't even know that I could explain it to have it make sense, but there's, there's really kind of three different areas that, they have three, when you talk about an alliance, it's three teams. So they're with three, two other high schools, Wilmer was, and they each have their own large robot, and they have to pick up boxes and bring them up high and set them up on a scale. They also have a switch that they try to control, and that is also balanced, and they get points for how much time that they have control of the switch. And then there's also a little cubby in the back wall that they, they put these boxes and insert them into them, and then they can get into power points. And then, and then there's strategy involved with, with having defense and blocking others and putting your blocks on their switch, and it's just, it's, it's an exciting two-and-a-half minutes.
Exactly.
For each, for each one of the, the competitions. But it, it went Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they made it into the finals, so then Saturday afternoon. It's, it's just, it's exciting for those kids.
Councilmember Mesky.
Councilmember Alvarado already talked about it, I'll put in more, a few, a few more details. The Wilmer Area League of Women Voters and the Human Rights Commission are sponsoring a citizen naturalization ceremony. Those are a very big deal and a very big honor to receive in your community. Wilmer is going to be receiving one of those. April 10th, you get the date, it's 11 o'clock at the Barn Theater, and there will be a reception to follow. The public is invited to attend. Apparently, they are a big deal, and Wilmer is going to try to put its best foot forward in presenting that. I know that, I believe the Human Rights Commission is going to be helping with the reception hors d'oeuvres and such, so we're hoping to get a, a flavor of Wilmer in that, so please put that on your calendar. The other thing, we did receive a, a sort of a reminder from the League of Minnesota Cities about any kind of protests and other things that could happen in your community as a result of the Parkland shooting. I have been made aware that there are students that are planning to participate in the March for Our Lives on March 24th. I mean, the city is going to fulfill its obligation according to what the league is recommending. If they have not communicated, my plea would be to please contact the police department as soon as you can, because the safety of our students and any other people that are marching is paramount. So just a reminder for those folks, if they're participating in any of those activities, to let the city know, because we have safety obligations to meet.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you all. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Motion made and seconded, we are adjourned.